The April 16th meeting of the zoning board of appeals is called to order. We have a roll call, please.
Mr. Armstrong, Ms. Chester, Ms. Harwood, Ms. McLaughlin,
here.
Ms. Yudman.
Here.
Mr. Wormburne and Mr. Welch.
Here. I believe we have a quorum. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No.
Then, I believe you all have the minutes to take a moment to review them for any corrections Hearing none, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
It's been moved, we have a second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the minutes of the March 19th meeting that were sent to us. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Are there any written communications the staff needs to make us aware of?
We did receive a message from the applicant for case 2014 C-03 asking to open the case and forward it to the May 21st meeting.
Do we have any continued public hearings to this meeting? No. Alright, then we'll call our one case for hearing. Is there anyone here who may wish to testify? If so, you need to stand and be sworn. Do you hereby swear and affirm that any testimony you give will be true and accurate to the best of your belief? Then we will call for hearing case ZBA-2014-major-1. Have a staff report, please.
Alright, yes sir. This is a request by Gary Frick of Olympic Construction to build a 1,296 square foot addition to the property at 907 West Fairview, in addition to the existing 2,304 square foot building. The building is currently used as storage with a small office space. It's, the building was, or the current use was granted a conditional use permit in 2006 to allow the use as a contractor shop for Olympic Construction. The addition, proposed addition would bring the floor area ratio of the property up from .299 up to 0.47. In the B1 neighborhood business district, the limit is 0.30 for a floor area ratio. And floor area ratio is the ratio of the usable floor area of a building divided by the total area of the lot. The lot area here is, I believe, 7,700 square feet and some change. So with the addition, the proposed floor area would be increasing. It's a 57% increase over the, what's the maximum floor area for that district, .3. Therefore, it's a major variance, and a major variance procedure is for the zoning board to vote, and if the board votes with a two thirds majority, then it would be forwarded to city council for final approval. If the board fails to make a two thirds majority vote, it would not go any further. So let's take a look at the site here. The site is located 907 West Fairview. It's just a little bit off of Lincoln Avenue on the south side of Fairview. It contains this building with a warehouse and office in it. Surrounding land uses, there's, immediately east is the Family Video and Hanger Orthotics retail business on a pretty big retail lot. That lot is zoned B1 neighborhood business as well. To the north, there's a multifamily apartment building. And otherwise, the other properties are mostly single-family or duplex units, most of which are zoned B, I'm sorry, R2. So here's a look at the zonings. The subject property is zoned B1. These other properties are B1 with businesses. Across the street, there's an R4, and there's some more R2 residential properties surrounding it. Taking a quick look at our comprehensive plan, future land use map. The subject site is shown here. It's, the future land use is shown as community business. It's surrounded by future land uses, which are also community business. There's a note on the map that says promote community business that can serve university population and immediate neighborhood. So that's the comprehensive plan, future land use for the site. In terms of the future land use of community business, it's designated to serve the overall community as well as the immediate neighborhood, but it's less intense than regional commercial centers. Located along principal arterial routes or at major intersections, community business centers contain a variety of business and service uses at scales and intensities that make them generally compatible with the surrounding neighborhoods. So that's the comprehensive plan. Turning to look at the site plan here. Okay, here's the proposed site plan. The applicant proposes to add this addition, 2,300 square feet just north of the existing Let's see, there's, the applicant would be adding parking spaces directly, whoops, adding parking spaces directly to the east of the building. Access to the site, there's a couple curb cuts, there's one on the site, there's one to the northwest here that's shared with Family Video. There's also, it's kind of hard to see, but directly east of the site, there's an ingress easement that provides access to the proposed parking. So 18 and a third of the, 18 and a third feet of the Family Video lot is dedicated to access to the subject site. And there's also another easement that provides access directly to Lincoln Avenue, which is down here at the south end of the site, that cuts across the Family Video lot, goes all the way to Lincoln Avenue. So let's see, that's access. Development regulations in terms of setbacks, the required setback in the B1 district is 15 feet. After the proposed addition, there would still be a front yard setback of 19 feet. Side yard, backyard, rear yard setbacks are all met. What else? Let's see, in the B1 district, there's no open space requirement, just to let you know. Parking requirements for this use, which was in 2006 determined to be a contractor shop and showroom, which is contractor shop, the parking requirement is one parking space for every 400 square feet of building area. So with the proposed addition, there would be 3,600 square feet of building area. The requirement would be for nine parking spaces, which are easily provided on the lot. So moving on to criteria for a variance, these are the criteria we look at for every case. First criteria, determine if there are special circumstances or practical difficulties with reference to the parcel concerned, or to establish that the proposed variance will not serve as a special privilege because the variance is requested, the variance requested is necessary due to special circumstances related to the land or the structure involved. For this one, there's no, the variance is necessary due to special circumstances, due to the location of the lot, the size of the lot, and the low allowed floor area ratio in the B1 district. The location is very conducive to the public convenience because Olympic Construction, they do lots of work with Carl Hospital, which is nearby, and the University of Illinois. However, the lot is undersized. It may have been, it was probably platted as a residential lot originally, probably about 100 years ago, but it has been used as a warehouse for several years, and even prior to Olympic Construction moving into that lot in 2006. So the lot is established as a commercial warehouse use. So let's see, also, in the B1 neighborhood business district, the floor area ratio maximum is extremely low. It's lower than even in the R2 single-family district. In the single-family district, you can have a floor area ratio of 0.4. In the B1 district, the limit is .3. So it's a bit of a hardship for a growing business. Second criteria, the variance was not the result of a situation or condition having been created by the petitioner. That is the case. The lot, as I mentioned, was used for commercial and warehouse uses prior to the establishment, I'm sorry, prior to the applicant's purchase of the lot. So it was an existing condition, and in order to expand, he needs more room on the lot. The next criteria, the variance will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. The character of the neighborhood is partially residential and single-family, but towards Lincoln Avenue, the character is much more commercial. The Family Video Hanger Orthotics lot is a large, a much larger lot with retail uses. If you look across the street to the north, there's an apartment building, and that apartment building has a floor area ratio of 0.8, which is a lot, a lot higher than what is being proposed. Also, if you look at setbacks in the neighborhood, most of the buildings are set back, the homes are set back about 15 feet or so, 15 or 20 feet. The current building is set way back, and the proposed addition would actually bring the setback into harmony with the neighborhood, because it would only be set back 19 feet. Also, in terms of the character of the neighborhoods, it's not going to be something that a lot of people are going to notice. There are two very large trees in the parkway, which kind of block views of the site, so people probably won't notice too much that there's even an addition. Here's the direct view from the street, you can see, it's kind of hard to see into the site. Looking at more of an angle, you can, from the Family Video would be to the left here, you can see into the site better from this angle. And the addition would just come out an additional 36 feet in front of where the existing building Fifth criteria, the variance will not cause a nuisance to the adjacent properties. The site has been running as a contractor, storage facility, and office for about, almost eight years now. We haven't received any complaints or inquiries even from the neighbors, so it's, the site will continue to be used in the manner that it has been in the past, and we don't anticipate any complaints from the neighbors. And the final criteria, the variance represents generally the minimum derivation from requirements of the zoning ordinance necessary to accommodate the request. This is basically the minimum amount necessary in order to keep Olympic Construction here in the lot where they've been. We want to keep them in Urbana, and this would be the minimum required necessary variance to make sure they're able to grow into the future. So that is the report tonight. The zoning board has the following options. You could vote to approve the request as requested, or second option is to approve the request with additional conditions. If there's any additional conditions, please state the findings for those conditions. And the third option is to deny the request, and if that is the choice, please state the findings for that. As I mentioned before, it's a major variance, so it requires a two thirds vote, which would be four votes tonight. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them. Also, petitioner is here.
Thank you, Jeff. Does anyone have any questions for staff?
I had two questions. One is, you know, we know what the current use is, and we expect the behavior to be, you know, the use to be similar, but then say the person sells or changes, the use changes, do you, what kind of things would you be worried about, or things that we should consider?
Well, with this type of building, we're probably not going to get really obnoxious uses, or we're not too afraid of that. It's not something that's conducive to being like a retail or a high-traffic use. So I don't really foresee any immediate hurdles if there's a turnover in ownership. But you're right, as, if the variance is approved, it would be a concern in the eventual future.
Just to clarify, if the variance is approved and the building stays as a warehouse, there's really limited uses for a warehouse. I'm just trying to imagine, like, worst-case scenario, just to, you know, feel it out. They couldn't do, turn it into a restaurant, that would be a whole different, or could it? You know, I mean, that's just thinking.
Right, right. Right, well, yeah, it's, it would take a lot of work to turn it into a restaurant. It'd probably be easier just to tear it down and start over.
And then they would have to redo the whole. You don't, the variance doesn't transfer over, does it?
Right, yeah. If the variance, if the structure is demolished, the variance will go away.
And I had a second question, about the B1 district and your comment about how the FAR is low for the B1 district. I'm just curious why it is low, if it's, because you're sort of making a comment, well, it seems like it shouldn't be too, that low, but it is, and so why hasn't it been changed, or is there a reason why it's at .3?
Well, it's, it's been low, I think, since the zoning ordinance was first established. And that's, I guess the reason is to prevent the allowed uses, the generally allowed uses in B1 could be things like cafes, stores, which would be a little more high-traffic. And so, and those uses also have higher parking requirements. So it's kind of keeping the floor area low, I think, was an idea to make sure nearby residences weren't impacted with high-traffic uses or large, obnoxious uses. But in this case, the property is, it's really, it's a B1, but it's on the corridor, the Lincoln Avenue corridor. It's got its back to the, to the neighborhood, kind of. It's kind of a real quiet use in terms of the neighborhood, what they see. So I think this lot is almost, could be rezoned for something a little higher intensity, B2 use.
Thanks.
I guess, are there any objections from the neighbors?
As I mentioned, we didn't get any objections or complaints. We got a call from a neighbor around the corner. Let me pull up the map. So up on Gregory, couple houses in, we got a call, someone was asking what the case was about. I explained it to them, and they said they did not object, and they were all for more business in their area.
Now we'll hear from the petitioner. And before you start speaking, could you sign in and put your address as well? Thank you.
Business address or home address?
Doesn't matter.
Pardon?
First of all, thanks for taking time out of your busy schedules to hear my case. I do appreciate that, and I know you're all busy as I am, and I do appreciate your help. Any questions? I believe Mrs. Harwood had a question about our business, what would happen if we were to leave the space. We plan to be there. We've been there for eight years. It's an ideal spot for our construction company. As you can see, I'm aging, and I have two sons in the business. They're going to be taken over in the not-too-distant future, and, you know, they're, because of the businesses we serve, this is ideal for us. It really is. We are just busting at the seams trying to maintain a good, efficient operation inside this limited space. To be able to add this addition to the front of the property would allow us to free up more of our shop space from being storage space. The space that we plan to add to the north would become storage, giving us more room in the back.
I do have a question. I noticed in the photo that you have some landscaping on that building. Will you be putting any landscaping on, I guess would be the north side of your building, the new north?
Yes, we would certainly plan to, yes. The north side would not have, I mean, it may have a couple of windows to it, would not have a door or an entry at that location. The doors for this new space would be to the east, as is our existing overhead door. Landscaping across the front always dresses things up, absolutely.
What kind of construction do you do? You don't build whole buildings, I take it?
No, sir.
No.
Absolutely not. We're a small construction company, general contracting firm. We do interior, commercial remodeling is our specialty. As we've said, we work a lot for Carl Hospital, a lot for the University of Illinois. We do inside remodeling of labs, classrooms. That's the majority of our work. We do work for a few other locations around town, of course, but 95% of our work is with those two institutions.
And what kind of objects do you store there for your business?
Metal studs, a little bit of drywall, paneling, not paneling, but sheet panels, plywood, wood studs. We have insulation that we store. We have a lot of tool-type storage, shop, garbage carts that we take to the locations. So we need, they're five feet long and five feet tall. We need a place to get them out of our production area and into a private area to store. Otherwise, we end up just moving things around constantly to try to come up with a place to work. If we can get those to a storage space, it will really speed up our work.
And so you just want more space? You're not going to be bringing in
No, sir.
substantially different types of
No.
objects to store?
What we're going to do is free up our workspace
Okay.
for working instead of for storing.
Thank you.
We don't expect high volumes of deliveries by any means. We have pickup trucks that come in and out of our shop that our company owns, you know, that's what takes things to and from. Once in a while, we'll get a delivery of a semi-truck, but we do have access off Lincoln through the easement, right to our overhead door, so it's a pretty easy operation to get things back in there on the limited numbers. Yes, ma'am?
I finally recall correctly, it was originally built as a storage shed for garbage trucks.
I don't know the answer to that.
Oh, I did.
Okay.
There was. There were garbage trucks that were stored in that building.
Yeah, I know there used to be three overhead doors during some of our renovation, we found a couple of those.
And it was a shaven, sanitary.
Is it? I know. Marino Engineering owned the property prior to us purchasing it.
Are there any more questions? Do you have any more comments, sir?
I don't. I feel that we have been a good neighbor to our neighbors. No comments, complaints over the last eight years, I think that tells that we have been trying to do our due diligence to keep our property clean and well-maintained, and hopefully this new addition will simply make it even better yet.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you, folks. Jeff, thanks for your help too as well.
Seeing no one else present, or obviously no more testimony, is there any more discussion amongst the board? Any additional comments from staff?
Yes, sir.
I believe we're ready for motion.
I move that we I move that we approve ZBA case number 2014-MAG-01, a request by Gary Frick for a major variance to allow an increase in floor area ratio from .3 to .47 at 907 West Fairview Avenue.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion amongst the board? I believe we're ready for a vote.
Ms. Chester?
Yes.
Ms. Harwood?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Ms. Yutman?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes. Motion carries then unanimously, and it will be forwarded on to the City Council for their consideration. Do you know when that will be?
It will be on Monday.
Is there any old business that needs to be discussed?
We need to officially open
Oh, that's right.
The other case and continue it.
I'm sorry, you're right. You're welcome to stay, or you can go.
If there's anything more I can help out, I appreciate all your help.
Thank you.
It's now called for hearing case number ZBA-2014-C-03, a request by Susan and Michelle Kozlosky for a conditional use permit to establish a daycare facility at 211 West High in the R2, Single Family Residential Zoning District. Staff have information for the board?
Nope, just that we will be presenting the report at the next meeting.
Terry, do we have to move to continue that, or is that just?
No, I think you do, yes.
You think we do?
No.
I can just ask if anybody opposes, and if everybody agrees, say aye.
It's, it's been requested by the petitioner that their case be continued to the next ZBA meeting?
Correct.
Is anybody opposed to that? Then I believe we will grant that request and continue that hearing. Now is there any old business?
No.
Is there any new business?
No.
Is there any, there's no audience, so we can skip that. Is there a staff report?
I would just report that on April 23rd next week, we have a public meeting for the Urbana Bicycle Master Plan update. It'll be at Urbana Middle School next Wednesday night at 6:30, so we hope people can attend.
All right. There's no study session? All right, then, I believe we're to the point where we are ready for an adjournment? All right, we need someone to move to
I move to adjourn.
I second that.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
No.
And, and the meeting is adjourned.